Manager for a little while, I understand, and without our fire chief for a while. And Mr. Yamas. Okay. We'll give him a couple of minutes here.
Mr. Yamas is on, Mayor?
He is on. There he is. Hi, okay. So we have all the council. Two, three, four, five, and. So we'll just go ahead and go on here. It'll take me a little while to read this introduction anyway. Welcome back and welcome to the February 2nd, 2022 Los Banas City Council meeting. The City Council Hall chambers. The City Hall Council chambers remain closed to the public. In accordance with Assembly Bill 361, all members of the City Council and city staff will join the meeting via phone or video conference, and no teleconference locations are required. You have an audio/video broadcast. The City Council meeting can be accessed in real time from your computer, tablet, or smartphone at the following links. Comcast Cable 96, YouTube on the city's YouTube station, or the Zoom link which you can access at the city's website. If you'd like to comment during a public meeting, comments will be taken at the time of each eligible agenda item. If you are a Zoom Video Conference participant, to comment by Zoom Video Conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. If you are a phone participant, to comment by phone, please call on one of the above listed phone numbers, those listed on the city's webpage. You'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. And that's when you want you request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You'll then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. Then press star six to unmute yourself in order to speak. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. All attendees shall be muted upon entry into the meeting. Please do not raise your hand if the item currently being heard is not the item you used to speak on. We will call for public testimony on each item individually. When the item you're interested in is called and public speakers are invited to raise their hands, raise yours. Then we will call you each in the order they are raised. You may, of course, speak on multiple items, but your comments during each item must address the item currently under discussion. Speakers attempt to speak about items other than the item currently under consideration will be muted and asked to wait for the item they're here to speak about to be called. If there is any disruption to the meeting, the live YouTube and channel 96 will be paused for a short period of time. Once the disruption is corrected, the live feed will resume and the meeting will continue where it left off. So, seeing you have no invocation listed tonight, so we will call the meeting to order at 6:05 PM. And we've asked Police Chief Brazy to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Now go to roll call. Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
President?
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Yamas?
Here.
Faria?
Here. We have a quorum. Item four, with consideration of approval of the agenda, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Yamas here. I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the agenda as submitted. Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. We will begin this evening with some presentations, certificates of recognition. The best part of being the mayor is being able to celebrate the good stuff. So we have four high school students here tonight, all from Los Banas High School. And. The list on the. The list on the agenda is from first on down, so I'll go ahead and read them in the order they're in the agenda. And so. First, do we have everyone on board? We have Emma and Ava and Larry and Lillian. Are you all logged on? If you have your cameras and you'd like to turn them on, you're welcome to. I see Lillian there. There's Larry. I see our city manager is coming on. All right. So, first place. We, Emma Van Loobensels, in recognition of receiving first place in the Los Banas Rotary Club's annual speech contest. Emma, I don't see Emma here. Congratulations. If I'm missing you, please let me know. These screens are a little strange, kind of like watching a Brady Bunch overinflated screen. The second. Second place in the Los Banas Rotary Club's annual speech contest went to Ava Minifee. She was a sophomore. And by the way, Emma is a senior. Ava, no Ava or Emma today. Larry's here. Hi, Larry. Larry's a sophomore, and this is in recognition of receiving third place in Los Banas Rotary Club's annual speech contest. And see, this is what your certificate looks like. I'll be signing it and getting it out to you. And once, and finally, Lillian Konamoto. She's a junior, and she received an honorable mention in the Los Banas Rotary Club's annual speech contest. Once again, the certificate. I want to congratulate you kids, congratulate your teachers. Of course, I teach at that school and have taught there for many years. And you exemplify the class, the great work at school and this town. And this FFA program has done for many, many, many years, and we appreciate it. We know you're going to go off and be the future. And our future is in great hands because we can see that by your success here tonight. If you'd like to say a word or two, I can, you can do that. Larry, would you like to say a word or two?
I'd like to say thank you very much, and I'm sorry about having to be outside. I'm at a banquet right now, so. I'd like to, thank you very much and good job to all the other competitors. Thank you.
Very good, and you're very welcome, and just doing more service out there. Lillian?
I was going to say the same thing Larry says. Thank you for letting us come today and thank you for having us here and congratulating us. Just having a speech competition was fun.
Excellent. Well, you're very welcome, and we hope to see you again soon for other things. I know we will for various FFA events and all the other stuff your kids are involved in with school. Thanks again for your hard work. Keep it up. And as I said before, Los Banas' future is in good hands. Thank you. Very good. Once again, celebrating the good stuff. Now, we're going to move on to item B in number five, and that's the COVID-19 status update. Hopefully, Dr. Yu has some good stuff for us tonight. Dr. Yu, and this will be Dr. Philip Yu from Memorial Hospital, Los Banas Sutter Health.
Well, thank you, Mayor Faria, and esteemed members of the City Council. Are you all able to hear me okay? Excellent. Thank you for that. By the way, I also won a speech contest when I was in high school. When I was a senior, I won the gold medal for the academic decathlon, so it was a very auspicious time to be here tonight to be able to see that. That's why I was sort of overjoyed actually to watch those youngsters. So, good. Well, let's go to the next slide, and I just wanted to give you, I realized, Councilman Lewis saw an update I did a while back, and I wanted to reintroduce our team. Kristy Marion is my chief nurse executive. I myself is the administrator, chief medical executive, but these are the illustrious individuals that are part of our hospital that make it go every single day from an operation and clinical standpoint. So John Campbell helps with our finance. Shawn makes sure. Shawn Garcia makes sure that we are able to staff the institution properly. Joy Castro works on our care coordination, care management. Shona Vant is our Director of Quality and Safety, and she is our newest member, but a really wonderful member of our team. And finally, Kirk Craig is our compliance officer. So I wanted to reintroduce you guys to the hospital a little bit. Next slide, please. And just remind us all, our hospital's 38 beds, 22 general acute care beds, four intensive care unit beds, and 12 perinatal beds. And we have about 200, I won't go through every detail, but we have 283 employees. And last year, which just closed out, we saw a record total patient day, 6230. Typically, we're in about the 4,000 mark as far as patient days in our hospital. That's almost a 50% increase due to COVID. Admissions up to 1,816 last year. ED visits increased to 24,301. Outpatient visits really surged up to 52,000 outpatient visits. Just to give you a sense, those are 25 to 30% increases over the last couple of years, mainly due to COVID. Next slide, please. Part of a large health system, you know that, the Sutter Health System, 24 hospitals across Northern California, integrated network. Go to the next slide, please. And I always want to remind us what our mission, vision, and values are. You know, our mission in particular is to enhance the well-being of people in the communities we serve. And I always emphasize, I know communities is not bolded, but I always emphasize communities especially. And then finally, we want to, you know, we're committed to compassion, compassionate, and excellence in our healthcare services. You know, we talk about our values almost on a daily basis, honesty, integrity, teamwork, innovation, affordability, excellence in quality, and community, and compassion, and caring. Each day at our safety meeting, one of us is always giving each other kudos on one of these values that we have achieved in our care that day or the previous day. Next slide, please. Oh, it goes through this whole thing. We can just go, there you go. Over the last year, we've had a couple of successes. One of them being our primary stroke recertification just a couple of months ago. Sorry, you're picking up a little background noise maybe. But we're also very proud of our type 2 diabetes honor rolled, our heart failure gold, as well as our NTSVC section rate, which is a marker of quality. Go to the next slide, please. Now we'll get into the COVID update. So many of you have heard about Omicron BA1. Now there's a BA2. So Omicron BA1 is the variant that replaced the Delta variant. It has over 30 spike protein mutations that make it different. And when Omicron first came out, we realized that it could evade the vaccines. But fortunately, the vaccines remain highly effective at preventing severe illness, hospitalization, and death. Now, we have seen that in our vaccinated population, but the sheer number of individuals that are being infected by Omicron even though they're vaccinated has also touched the unvaccinated population and increased our numbers as well in this latest surge. Omicron BA1 was able to evade certain medications. One of the, I know these are, don't try and pronounce these names. I can barely pronounce them. So Bamlivimab, Etasivimab is one of them. You know that as Regeneron. That, that'll make it a little easier. Casirivimab and Indevimab, these medications are no longer effective. In fact, they're out of circulation. We actually had them in-house and were using them and stopped when Omicron came out. Cetrovimab, which we also have in-house, remains effective, and we're giving it. Next slide, please. Tell you a little bit about Omicron BA2. So this one is 20 mutations different from BA1. By the way, there's a BA3, a BA4, but BA2 seems to be able to transmit a little bit better, a little bit faster than BA1. So in countries like Denmark, it's starting to take over. And we have already detected it in the United States, and there are already cases of BA2 here in California. Now, just as, it's better than BA1, a little bit better at evading the vaccines. But again, it appears initially now, the initial data that we have, is that the vaccines remain effective against BA2 as well as BA1. And it doesn't appear BA2 leads to more severe disease than Omicron BA1. So that's the good news about it. Next slide, please. So what are we seeing? How many cases of Omicron are we seeing? So our seven-day case rate, and this is California only, but the rest of the country is mimicking these graphs. And these are similar to graphs, by the way, when we graph our region or area here in Northern California and then the Central Valley. So new case rate, they were really going up very, very quickly, especially starting around January 3rd, 4th, and 5th. We started seeing our hospital fill up, a lot of patients coming in. We've since seen that just drop slightly, but we've kind of plateaued. Deaths, seven-day average death rate, now that lags behind. So you'll notice that that is still going up because unfortunately, it lags behind by about three or four weeks. Once an individual gets severely ill or sick, comes in, is in the intensive care unit, it takes a while for us to, you know, we're going to fight like heck to try and get that patient better, but it takes a while for them to go through that process. So you'll see the mortality rate lag, and you can see that actually in the data from the previous surge which occurred last January, actually, last August, there was a surge. But you can see the really much larger surge back in last January of 2021, right? So, and you can see now, this year's surge is, the graph on the left is much, much higher. So we're very concerned that as we go through time, the graph on the right, the average mortality or death rate, that may surge as well. Next slide, please. This is Los Banos, or our county at a glance. If you go to the top left of new cases, you can see that that graph mimicked all the other graphs that we just looked at. And you can also see how that graph, the cases, the new cases compares to the previous three surges. We are in the fourth surge, by the way, just so you know. And this surge is the most intense because it happened so quickly. You can see how fast the graph rose up, how many cases came. And you can also see that all the other surges, they kind of rose up, but they kind of leveled, the slope of it leveling out was much more gradual. This tends to, this last surge has tended to be very quick and accelerated because of the Omicron BA1's ability to evade the vaccines. And you can also see down below on the number of cases by community that Los Banos is, like all the other communities, accelerating quite quickly. And then the graph of number of cases by community per thousand residents, that's a rate. And so Los Banos is not the winner of that one, but its rate is still going up. Finally, I'm going to point out to you, on the right side, the 46.26%, that's the percentage of Merced County residents fully vaccinated. I think Los Banos is probably a little bit better than that actually from all of our efforts. But nevertheless, overall, in the county, less than half of the, those individuals who are eligible to get vaccinated are fully vaccinated. And that causes some of the issues or problems. One other number I'll point out is the regional ICU capacity at 8.9%. That ICU capacity is us and Mercy Merced. We are at 100% capacity, meaning that, I apologize, we're at 0% regional ICU capacity, meaning that we have no beds open right now. Our ICU is completely full. And typically, about 70 to 80% of our ICU is COVID at any given time. Next slide, please. So what are we doing today? What's happening today? And this is from us looking. Our ICU remains full. In this surge, during this surge, we've had between eight and 15 COVID patients admitted to the hospital. As you remember earlier, I said that we've got four ICU beds and 22 med surg telly beds. So most of the patients that are in the hospital are COVID. Most of our severely ill patients are unvaccinated. It's about 90%. There are some vaccinated patients who are also hospitalized. They tend to be less sick. They tend to stay for shorter periods of time, and they tend not to require intensive care unit care, which is a, which is a really good thing. But those who are unvaccinated, unfortunately, they are being severely affected. And none of the other diseases such as, you know, regular old pneumonias, infections, RSV, flu has come back, congestive heart failure, people falling and breaking their hips, none of that has gone away. Those diseases don't seem to want to take a break either, so we're seeing a lot of that as well. And rising to meet the challenge of those healthcare needs. And rising to meet the challenge of those healthcare needs. Next slide. So what, you know, what's going on? So as you may have heard, staffing challenges of the pandemic have been widespread and we are no, no different from any other hospital as far as staffing challenges. Earlier, I showed you a picture of my chief nurse and as well as my HR leader, as well as all my other clinical quality leaders. These people have been working extremely hard to staff the hospital. And I will tell you, I don't want to jinx myself, but during this pandemic, we have been able to staff to take care of our patients and not go out of what are called ratios for our staff, meaning that if you're on the floor, you, every four patients gets one nurse and that's what we want. And if you're in the ICU, every two patients gets one nurse. And those are the staffing ratios that are by law here in California. And we have worked very hard to be able to provide those staffing ratios. If you walked into my ED this morning, you would actually find a fully staffed emergency department. And I'm very proud to be able to say that because my ED manager and all my ED staff are working incredibly hard to take care of patients. When it comes to supplies, every Monday, Wednesday and Friday, we review our entire ventilator, COVID testing, oxygen, medications, PPE supplies. We are in good supply. In previous presentations, I have told you that we went out and bought new ventilators and anticipate, even before the pandemic, to prepare, we borrowed ventilators. We thought at one point that we would be ventilating 22 COVID patients. We basically thought everybody in our hospital would be on a ventilator. So we had 22 ventilators in our hospital at one point. And during that time, that first surge, we actually got up to 15 ventilated patients for a very short period of time. It was very scary, but we were able to take care of those patients. We did not want to ever get into the ethical issue of not having what our patients needed. So, and we continue to do that. We have, we have plenty of tests, we have oxygen, we have medications and we have PPE. Staff morale, I will be blunt, there is no hospital whose morale is not affected deeply by this. It's been two, we're coming up on two years of this pandemic and it is exhausting. We're, we're all working extra, we're all doing extra. That's what my chief nurse likes to say, we're all doing extra. We're happy to do it, but it is, there's a lot of burnout, not just amongst our nursing staff, amongst us as physicians as well. Some of you may, may or may not know, my job as a physician part is ICU hospital care. That's what I specialize in, that's what I do. And it's, it's exhausting, but we're in it for the long run, we're in it for the fight. And, and we're still here, we're still standing. Finally, vaccinations. We still offer vaccinations at our rural health clinic, we encourage vaccinations. With the most recent booster mandate for healthcare, 80, as of today, we have to get all of our staff vaccinated obviously by March 1st. But as of today, this morning, when I looked up our statistics, 80, 86% of our active staff have received their booster or are exempt. And I will tell you, we don't have a lot of exemptions, most of these are boosted. 91% of our physicians have received their booster or are exempt. Like I said, very few exemptions, very few physicians ask for an exemption. Most are, you know, 91% of our physicians are boosted. And that's not just for us, we do it because we, we realize that if we get sick and we go down, there's nobody left to take care of when patients come in. So we take that, that duty very seriously. And that's why a lot of our staff, you know, have been boosted. I have spoken long and hard to them about, you know, what our job is, what our mission is, is to be able to take care of our community. Again, there's that word community. And in order to do that, we can't, we can't go down. If we do go down, we gotta, we gotta bounce back and get, get back to work. And believe me, us, that's what our staff does. When they get sick, when they come down with either COVID or, or other illnesses, when they're ready, they, they're, they're ready to, they're asking if they can come back to work. Sometimes I have to tell them no. But that's a good thing, that our staff want to come back and they're, they're involved in the mission. Next slide, please. So I also wanted to finally talk a little bit about what we are continuing to work on because we realize that a hospital that serves the community can't just say, okay, well, the only thing we're going to work on is COVID. No, we're going to continue to work on improving our growth in the rural health clinic, being able to expand our primary and specialist services. Just today, I was working on a couple of specialists to see if they'll come out to our hospital and provide services. We've established a pediatric hospitalist program, meaning that we want to be able to, when we get young kids, little kids that come into the hospital, we have to ship them. And sometimes they just have an asthma attack and we can take care of them and discharge them in, you know, a day or two. We're, we're working on getting a gastroenterology program here to Los Banos. And that will be huge, being able to do both the gastroenterology care. We have about 15 ED patients every month that need to stay with us in the hospital, but because we don't have gastroenterology, we have to transfer them to other hospitals like Memorial or like San Jose Regional. Having their care here and their follow-up care here will greatly improve the overall care we can deliver to the community. You know this, that we've been working on reducing ED transfers and having our physician colleagues practice at the top of their licensure, which means that we're all doing more. And, and that way we can take care of community members here. And of course, lastly, we've been increasing our nursing staff to increase, to meet these increased demands, as well as finally working to meet the challenges of our four surges thus far. July of 2020 was our first surge, December of 2020 was what we thought was the largest surge. We were wrong because right now we're in our largest surge. Good. I think that concludes my presentation and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Yu for that extensive update. Council, would you like to raise your hand if you would, if you would like any questions for Dr. Yu? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Yu, for once again coming and imparting this information to our council and just being so thorough with the information about what's going on in our county and in our community. I really do appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions. You refer to Omicron BA1, BA2. And I heard on the news last, last week that there was a new virus that had come out and it was called Stealth Omicron. Is that the Omicron B2 or is B2 something else?
No, correct, you're correct. BA2 is stealth because it does not have the S gene dropout. So it actually on PCR testing looks a little lit by, it looks like Delta. So people were thinking it was Delta and that's how they probably missed it the first time around, realized it actually is a derivative of Omicron, the original Omicron virus.
Okay, so does this stealth act more like the BA1 or does it act more like the Delta?
Great, great question. It acts more like BA1, thank goodness. So from a, from a mortality standpoint, Delta was probably three or four times more dangerous than Omicron, but Omicron's about as dangerous as the original or Alpha. So just to give you that sense, because Delta was really an angry bug, as I tend to say.
Okay. And then on one of the screenshots that you showed us in regards to the seven-day and the daily rates, were, were those numbers particular to California or were those US rates?
Those were, I pulled the California rates in particular. And I actually did look up the county rates as well, but I thought the graph put out by Merced Public Health was a little bit more, was a better graph.
Okay. Well, and with this, well, the BA1, BA2, for people who are seeking to get, to be boosted, is there a recommended time that you know from the CDC that they should get it after they have recovered from the BA1?
Yeah, the original recommendation has gone away, I think it was 90 days. And so they recommended that, now the recommendation, the latest one, is that once you're asymptomatic, you can, you can pretty much go and get it. And that follows along lines with immunity. I think there are some recommendations to maybe wait a couple of weeks, but you don't have to wait the 90 days after you, after you get sick before you get a booster.
Is, is that more for coverage for the BA2 or was it, you know, because the CDC seems to change their recommendation levels so often and it really causes a lot of concern in the public as to whether or not, you know, they should follow with the CAC, I'm sorry, the thing you is saying. And so it's just a lot of confusion out there. So that's something that I had heard, is that they recommend it waiting 90 days after you've had the virus before you boost, but now apparently it's changed.
Yeah. And so, you know, I don't think that getting the boost is to, to, to cover for, you know, any specific virus, but that just in overall, once an individual's fully vaccinated and boosted, it tends to decrease their risk of severe illness, hospitalization or mortality in general. And that's the, that's the principle behind the boost as opposed to covering one specific variant or another. The good thing about, you know, the Omicron variant right now is that the vaccines still seem to offer that significant protection of reducing that mortality, even though people are getting symptomatic disease, they're not tending to get as sick. And what we're seeing in the hospital bears that out. That's why I think they're recommending getting boosted because it'll reduce that load on the hospital and also reduce that mortality rate, which in the end is what we want to go after.
Okay, so with that being said, you know, with the original virus, the 19, there was talk about having some sense of an immunity after you've had the virus. Does that still stand in any way with each of these viruses as they mutate? Does one person, does a person have some, some sort of immunity for maybe 30, 60 days or what the average may be? I'm not sure what the average is with, with all the new viruses that are coming out.
Yeah, I think that, I'll, I'll, I'll try and answer it this way. COVID, as you, as, as, let's say you get COVID, right? The original COVID. And then you get Omicron again. Each time you get it, your immune system does build up further immunity that can cross-react or cross-cover you against other variants that come along. We see that in influenza, right? So if you get flu one year and then you get flu the next year, you start to build up a degree of immunity to those viruses. And the reason why you, you know, that's, that, it's not always perfect and it won't be, and that's why the viruses themselves mutate to be able to reinfect you. But it does make it so that you can fight off the virus better in the future and, and you're, you know, your own immune system will prevent you from, you know, having severe effects. The other thing that viruses do, and that's what we're seeing with Omicron, is that they sent, they tend to do this process called attenuation, meaning that they themselves don't, if you think about from an evolutionary standpoint, a virus doesn't necessarily want to knock off everybody, doesn't want to turn us into zombies. It actually kind of wants to infect us, mutate and come get us again maybe later on, maybe next season. And thereby propagate itself and keep itself going for long periods of time, right? So it really wants to attenuate or decrease its, its, you know, its, its, what am I trying to say? Its virulence, its anginess, I, you know, if you want to put it that way. So that it just causes you a, an infection that doesn't kill you eventually. Unfortunately, when they first come out, they just don't know, the viruses, you know, they're not sentient beings, they don't know that they're going to harm humans in this way, like the original COVID and the Delta. But as this, as the COVID viruses mutate, they should continue to attenuate and become less and less deadly. The other way we fight that is by gaining further and further immunity, either through vaccine or infection, and building up our own protections and our own immune systems so that we can, when we're exposed to future variants, we can ward them off better and not suffer the severe consequences from them.
You're muted, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Dr. Yu, for answering the questions and it was very helpful and educational. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. All right, Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Yu, for coming on. And Councilmember Lewis actually asked a few of my questions. I, I just have one other question I'd like to ask. I know we have a total mortality, that you showed us the number, but is it available where you can kind of give me an idea from the first, or when we first went into this, started getting this Omicron B1 and B2, what our mortality has, has come to?
Yeah, from the, this, this last surge, basically. Yeah, so at, at Los Banos, and we've had about 11 mortalities since the start of this, this surge. Unfortunately, we're going to have, we're going to have to wait for a little bit of time. Some of that was probably left over from the Delta surge and we're not through this surge yet. So we're going to, we're going to see that. Total, over the entire four surges, we've been at a little over 70 at this point.
And that's for Los Banos?
That's just for our hospital and our, that's correct. That's just for our hospital ICU. I don't know, I think the regional numbers were up there, but not all of those individuals are hospitalized unfortunately. Some, some don't make it to the inpatient unit, right? If you don't die on the inpatient unit, we won't capture it. If you're in the emergency room, sometimes we don't capture those.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Yu. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Yu. I appreciate your time, appreciate your expertise and your knowledge. It's very important to help communicate this information out to the public. I just wanted to touch on what you, you were talking about is how these viruses, they kind of lose their lethality, if you will, over a period of time, then in combination with people gaining immunity towards it, whether through vaccination or natural. We know that in the news, we have the United Kingdom has decided, hey, we're just going to load this, and they've decided that it's to the point of endemic. Do you see us going in that direction? And, and do you think that that's wise or, you know, I would like you to have your take on that?
Yeah, I do, I do see us getting to, being in endemic situation like we are with like flu and everything else. So, you know, we're all hoping to come out of the pandemic and getting to that, that stage. That is the, that is the hope. And, you know, it's a long fight, right? As we're developing our own immunities and as, and treatments and ability to, you know, fight the virus off and as the virus attenuates and as you eloquently put it, Councilman Lannis, loses its lethality, which we hope it does. You know, that, that will help us get to a much better place.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And I was reading this article, January 19, 2022, from Dr. Ben Sook from the CDC. He states that unvaccinated people who have caught the, caught and recovered from COVID-19 have better protection against the Delta variant, in this case, than those who have been double jabbed. So I guess that supports what you've been saying, is that sometimes our own immunity is better than an artificially produced product.
Yeah. And, you know, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
I just wanted to put that out again. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, appreciate your wisdom and your expertise. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Well, Doctor, once again, we appreciate your visit. Had to attend a funeral last week, a friend of mine who my age died of COVID. It's, I've, I've attended five funerals in, in January and I think three were from COVID. So it's, it's tough stuff. And we appreciate all that you're doing there at the hospital. And we understand that these numbers really impacted the medical world. And I have a number of friends in the medical world and they're exhausted. And we want to make sure they know, they have our support and our, our constant support, anything we can do from this end to help, anything I can do from this end to help. anything we can do from this end to help, anything I can do from this end to help, I don't know what, but I'm, I can, I'm there to offer that. And say, everyone, you know, stay safe, follow the guidelines, and take care, stay well. Thanks again for joining us tonight, Dr. Yu. We very much appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
So now we will move to the public forum. Just to note tonight, that when it gets right around seven o'clock, we have to move to item nine A. We'll let the public know that. So we'll go to the public forum first, maybe get through the consent agenda before that. All right, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest, that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines on how to participate, make comments are listed on pages one and two of this agenda. Comments received prior to the, to the meeting will be read into the record at appropriate time during the city council meeting. Ms. Maloney, I'll go to the, to the hand raising first, and then, then go to the, to the emails. So first, we have Walt Ballard. So Walt Ballard, if you'd like to speak in the public forum.
Hi, it's actually Kathy Ballard, sorry.
Thank you.
If I could do a photo, and my IT guy was here, I'd do it, but I can't. So I just wanted to mention, since you have it once a month on your agenda, and now it's on a consent agenda, I really would like to see our city council meetings open. I just heard from Dr. Yu, I understand what he's saying, but he also said in there that it increases our strength to fight this if people are out there in the open and living their lives. I think as leaders of our city, we should set an example and open up the city council and try to get back to normal. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Go to Sandra Benetti.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Sandra Benetti here on behalf of Peninsula Clean Energy. I'm present before you this evening to provide some information to Los Banos residents and businesses regarding upcoming enrollment for Peninsula Clean Energy's electricity generation services. So as you know, Peninsula Clean Energy is a public agency that purchases energy from clean sources like solar and wind farms, just like the one out on Billy Wright Road, Wright Solar, and passes savings on to its customers. The Los Banos City Council voted to join Peninsula Clean Energy in 2020, and Peninsula Clean Energy will begin serving Los Banos residents and businesses soon, this April. Enrollment notices will be mailed directly to account holders that pay an electricity bill within the incorporated jurisdiction of Los Banos starting this month. And I wanted to let the community know that our next workshop regarding enrollment for Los Banos is scheduled for Tuesday, March 15, at 6:00 P. M., and this is going to be at the community center. This particular workshop will be presented in Spanish for regular and NEM, or net energy metering, solar customers, those with rooftop filler. And those folks can join us either in person or virtually, so they can register to attend this workshop, or they can join us in person at the community center. The next workshop after that will be held on Thursday, March 31st, at 6:00 P. M., also at the community center. This workshop will be presented in English, and this will be for our regular customers, and folks will be able to join us either virtually or in person for this workshop as well. Registration for the workshops will open in a couple of weeks for those who want to join us virtually. And at that time, folks will be able to access the registration from our website, which So if you didn't get to join us at our first workshop for NEM customers, we'll be holding an additional workshop for those customers in English, and that will be a hybrid in-person virtual workshop, and it'll be in April, and that date is coming, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. I see no other hands raised, so we'll go to Ms. Maloney for any internet online public forum comment.
I've received no comments by email or mail.
Very good. Thank you. So no further comment in the public forum. We will close the public forum. And, oh, turned too many pages. And go to item seven. This is the consideration of the approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Ms. Maloney, please read the consent agenda items.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 230615 through 230801 in the amount of $1,107,162.13. Second quarter investment report for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Minutes for the city council meeting of January 5, 2022. City Council Resolution Number 6458, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Los Banos pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Numbers, Number 6459, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to professional service agreement with placeworks to the preparation of a general plan update and accompanying environmental impact report, and adopting a revised budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 as it pertains to expenditures in the amount not to exceed $178,113, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Very good. Thank you. I'll go to council, see if anyone would like to pull any items for con, for discussion or a separate vote. Mr. Jones?
No comments or discussion, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas?
No items, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Hearing no, no request to pull any items, chair will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda as submitted.
Mayor Protim Lambert, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Protim Lambert, and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. We're getting very close to that seven o'clock time. I think item eight will, will probably take a little more than 10 minutes, correct? Or, Ms. Maloney, what would you, what do you think would be wisest to do?
I think, Stacy, 10 minutes would give you enough time for that item, don't you?
Yes, it's best.
Okay. Very good. And since it is a second reading and adoption, very good. So we will go to item eight then, which is the elimination of the Economic Development Advisory Commission. And for that, we go to Community and Economic Development Director, Susan Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, as you stated, on January 19th, the city council waived the first reading and introduced ordinance number 1195 to eliminate the Economic Development Advisory Commission and repeal the ordinance within the municipal code. So staff is recommending that the city council would waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1195 by title, and that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
That was my cough button. On this item, we do not require a public hearing. And so, council, if you have any question or comment, please raise your hand. If not, chair will entertain a motion to waive the second reading.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1195 as read by title.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, and a second by Mayor Protim Lambert, to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1195. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. And before we move to the adoption motion, I will read the entire item. Eliminating ordinance number 1195, eliminating the Economic Development Advisory Commission specifically, repealing Title II, Chapter II, Article IV, the Los Banos Municipal Code. Ms. Lewis, would you like to make the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1195 as read by title.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lambert?
I'll second.
Very good. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, and a second by Mayor Protim Lambert, to adopt ordinance number 1195. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Do we need to wait till seven o'clock exactly? Just for item nine?
Yes, you need to wait till 7:00 P. M.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break, and we'll log back on, and come back on at seven o'clock to, to hear item nine, item nine, nine A. Thanks.[1320.76] Hello, everybody, and welcome back. All our demographics experts here. Some of those maps look like you're shaving a door to fit with a plane to fit the door frame. All the variations in there. Okay. I see Mr. Yamas, Mr. Lambert, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones, you back with us, too?
I'm here, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Ms. Mallory? Wait for City Clerk to come back on.
You're ready to go, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so now we move to item 9A, and it's a public hearing. We have just one public hearing tonight. Regarding the public hearings, if you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The public hearing tonight is to receive public input and testimony regarding public revision, possible revisions, to Los Banas City Council Electoral District Plan. And it's going to involve City Council Resolution Number 6460, adjusting the boundaries of the City Council District in order in accordance with California Elections Code Subsection 21601-21609 and Municipal Code Section 2-2 dot 102C. And we go to City Attorney Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, members of the community that are watching. This item is the fourth public hearing that we've held on the redistricting of the city's four electoral districts. Dr. Jeff Tilton from NDC is here tonight. He'll be presenting a PowerPoint as to where we've been, where we're going, and all the numbers that he's been crunching for us. And I believe he has two proposed maps, Draft A and a Draft B for your considerations tonight, and any other maps that may arrive during the public hearing process. So staff is requesting that you receive the staff report from Dr. Tilton. You open the public hearing. You allow public comment. And hopefully you select a preferred map and adopt the Resolution 6460 as presented. Also with us here tonight is Chris Scannell, our special legal counsel, to answer any questions of that nature that you might have. So without further introduction, I'll turn it over to Dr. Tilton, who's got a PowerPoint for you.
Thank you, Counselor. We go to the next slide, please. So as Counselor Vaughn had mentioned, this is the fourth of four required public hearings. The first two, as you may recall, were before we were to share draft map. The intention there was to educate and solicit input from the community on the districts in the city. Again, the census were released on August 12th, but California took those data and adjusted it through its prisoner adjustments. In essence, all the inmates in the California prison system were essentially reallocated back to the previous jurisdictions. So it may have impacted some jurisdictions a lot. It may have not impacted them at all. However, we had to wait, and we could not do anything with respect to data until late September when those data were released. So the maps before you are based on the California adjusted data, and we'll go from there. We held a draft map hearing on December 15th. Counselor gave me direction on a particular map. I will show you that tonight, and here we are. And if I'm in error on my table there with respect to first reading of ordinance, I apologize on that. Next slide is. So throughout this process, again, for anybody who might be watching for the first time, and my apologies to Counselor if this is something that you've heard many times already. We must follow federal laws. It's our intention to get each of the of the district in the city an equal population. We can have a 10% or less deviation. The courts have allowed that, and I'll show you what that means in a second. We must follow the federal voting rights act. We don't want to have any discriminatory practices whatsoever. We want no racial gary management. So right out the gate, we must follow federal laws when we're redistricting the districts in the city of Los Banas. Then we shift to California. In other reform aspect, we must follow this particular order for consideration of our districts, that our districts are geographically contiguous. And everything starts with, to the extent practical, to the extent possible, that we don't divide neighborhoods or communities of interest. And we want to have easily identifiable boundaries. And in the Central Valley, you know, major roads, highways, railroad tracks, waterways are easily identifiable boundaries, at least from the Central Valley coast. And then we want our districts to be compact. We don't want to bypass one group to reach another, have plenty-looking tentacles reaching out from one district into another, et cetera. If we're able to meet those criteria in the column on the left in the center column, and we can look at some of the other traditional redistricting principles. However, the task is, is there just enough for meeting the federal laws and the California criteria, the fair maps act? And we shall not favor discrimination against the political party in this process. Next slide is. So here's the makeup of the current district, existing district, following the 2020 census using California's adjusted data. The key here, right out the gate, we're looking at that lower right-hand corner, that bottom cell that says 17.86%. That's the deviation. It's well above the 10% threshold. How we get that number, somebody wants to know, we take the highest positive number in the deviation column, percent deviation column, and that would be in District 1. And that's it, 5.91. And then we take the highest negative number, which is in District 3, negative 11.95, and we add those two together, and that's how we get 17.86%. So the ideal population we're looking for across the four districts is 11,419. So you can see in the Districts 1 and 2, we're over. And a little bit in District 4, 18. And then we're under in District 3. So next slide, please. So as part of this process, we thought information from members of the community on neighborhoods and communities of interest. And sadly, you see next to nothing in that respect. Next slide, please. So these are not new to you. Draft A is, you saw this last time, it has a 9.79% deviation. With respect to citizen born age population, it has three districts that are Hispanic majority districts, all except District 3 in this particular example. And this one here, Counselor directed me to shave District 2, the upper northwest area of District 2 that is going into District 1 a little bit. It asked me to come back with a map that fits that particular direction. And I did that. And so next slide, please. And while it looks nice and pretty and compact, it's over the population balance of 13.69%. So that should not be considered for tonight and for the next 10 years. Next slide, please. And we have Draft B. And again, you saw this last time. This is where, there in the northwest corner, you have a section of District 2 going into District 1, and more of a kind of a triangle. This has a tighter deviation of 4.01%. It also has a majority of citizen born age population in three of the four districts in the city. So you saw this one as well. Next slide, please. So that's it. The two draft maps that you have before me are the same as you saw on the third public hearing, the first pre-draft, excuse me, first draft map public hearing, minus the directive that you gave me to come up with something from Draft A to shave that portion of District 2 and put it into District 1. But that is not going to work for us. So that concludes my presentation. I yield back to the mayor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The first thing we'll do is go through council for question and comment. And then, after a little discussion, then we'll see about choosing which map we want to go with.
Mayor, you still need to open up the public hearing portion as well, if there's any members of the public want to speak to the PowerPoint.
Let's open the public hearing first. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing on this first. Anyone in the public wish to speak? I see no raised hands. Ms. Mallory, do we have any written public hearing items on this item?
I see no advance written comments, but let me check email real quick. I see no email either.
Okay, very good. Saying no comment in the public hearing? There is no comment to the public hearing? We will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Question, comment, and then run through and see if there's some consensus on which map we like. Mr. Jones?
Then you have a question. So with some of our current developments that we have, especially in District 2 and District 3, are we not allowed to take that in consideration at this time?
Sorry for that delay. Counselor, you know, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I mean, the sort of short answer is yes and no, as in so many things. A little bit of deviation to kind of take that into account. You'll notice that in these maps, District 3 is underpopulated, which would allow for some wiggle room. That's permissible. But the Supreme Court has said that any sort of attempt to really take that future growth into account really has to be done on sort of a systematic and citywide basis. And given the timeline, we just haven't been able to pull together the type of data that would allow us to do that in any sort of detailed way. So, you know, if you like one map instead of the other because there's a little bit of difference in that respect, that's fine. But anything more than that, we really just don't have the option to do this time around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
No comments here, Mr. Mayor. I see, I believe, the new map that he came up with, with the B, I think maybe puts us in the guidelines.
Okay, very good. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm looking at page 68, which is Los Banas Redistricting 2021 Draft B. And it seems, based on what's being shared with us today, that seems to be the most equitable redistricting map that we have a choice on, just based on what's been shared with us. I don't know that we have an option, really, to fit into the demographics that the federal government, the state, has outlined for us. And, yeah, I hear Councilmember Jones's concerns about growth. I think all of our districts are going to be growing here within the next 10 years. And so there'll probably be some more shifting 10 years from now, because even with the growth that's happening, we still don't know how many people are going to be in those homes individually, which is a part of the census count. So if I'm correct, I think that Draft B would probably be the, really, the only equitable choice that we have at this point, based on what's been given to us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Yamas, any questions or comments?
No, sir. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And from what I understand, when there is a process, when land is annexed or when housing is planned, there's a process in place. Mr. Vaughn and I spoke about it a little bit today, to adjust to that. And what would the timeframe be for that? If there were, you know, a new batch of houses built, would there need to be, would that have to be, you know, readdressed? How large a population change in a district because of, you know, development would require us to, you know, go back and reexamine the maps? And how much time would we have or need or be allotted to do that?
Yeah, I think the specific question was if the boundaries of the city changed and incorporated new lands into the city that are not currently in any of the four districts. What is the city's obligation at that point? And what's the process for doing a redistricting at that time?
Are you ready, Mr. Scannell?
Zoom.
Apologies. The answer to that is that the triggers for readjusting the lines mid-decade, if there are annexations, is if it would increase the city's population by 25% or more. And as long as there are at least four years left until the next redistricting. So basically between now and 2026. Once you get past that, this presumption is just that you'll fix it in 2030.
So where does the newly annexed property, how does it get allocated between one of the four districts? For instance, you see that sliver to the north. If that were to be annexed between Districts 2 and 3, what would that sliver be? Which district would that sliver be in for future elections?
Yeah, basically, it says the territory to the nearest existing council district, without changing the boundaries of the other districts. And so in that circumstance, that sliver, you have two districts that are equally near. So I think it would be within the discretion of the council to determine what made the most sense there.
So it'd be a council decision as opposed to an election official's decision in Merced, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I mean, if you were to, for example, annex territory at the north edge of District 1 in that map, so that it's only touching District 1, then it would just automatically go there. But in that scenario that you talked about, where it's touching both 2 and 3, I think in that scenario, the council would then have the discretion to make that choice.
Unless it went over that 25% threshold, and then District 1, in your example, might require some adjusting to our all the districts.
It would require us to go through this process a little bit.
I get it. Okay.
Very good. Well, thank you. If that seemed like B is the most equitable, but what I will do is go through council and see which choice each council member would like. And if there's consensus, we'll just go ahead and entertain a motion and adopt it. Mr. Jones?
Draft B, Mayor.
B? Draft B, Houston. Very good, thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Draft B here also, Mr. Mayor.
B, and Ms. Lewis?
Draft B.
And Mr. Yamas?
B is in Bravo.
Oh, B is in Bravo. And I concur. Chair will entertain a motion to adjust the boundaries of the City Council districts in accordance with California Elections Code Subsection 21601 through 21609, Municipal Code Section 2-2 dot point 102C. And this will be Resolution Number 6460. I have a motion.
And incorporating Draft B into that resolution?
Very good. Incorporating Draft B into the resolution as submitted in the agenda.
Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6460 as read by title and incorporating Draft B as the choice for City of Los Banas.
Very good. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Yamas, I'll second that.
Very good. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, second by Councilmember Lamis, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6460, incorporating draft map Draft B. Ms. Mallory, roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Furia?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. We want to thank National Demographics, Mr. Scannell, Mr. Tilton, Mr. Vaughn, and our city manager, Mr. Pigno. Everyone's put in a great deal of work. This is very, very complex stuff. It's great. It's very time-consuming, we know. And we appreciate the work very much. You've made it very, very smooth for us. It was so clear and so beautifully done. We appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move on to item 10. The American Rescue Plan Act Proposed Spending Plan. And this is going to involve City Council Resolution Number 6461, authorizing expenditures from the ARPA and adopting a revised budget for fiscal year 2021-22 as it pertains to these expenditures. And for this item, we go to Finance Director Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So tonight I have for you another edition of the Funding for the ARPA Rescue Plan Act. And just to give you a little history, I'm not sure why this isn't working. One second. My computer's not cooperating. Sorry. Of course, it does it on my own presentation. I can't change the slide. I'm sorry. Just to give you a little bit of history, we have been waiting for the Department of Treasury to release the final rule governing the spending guidelines. We have an interim final rule that we had been working off of. But in January of this year, they finally adopted the final rule. So the final rule has made a couple of changes. The most important change that they made was to the first category, or public sector revenues. This, we've talked about This we've talked about a lot because this was the most important category to the City of Los Banas. It allows for the most flexible use of the money, but we didn't qualify for it before. And some of the reason we didn't qualify for it was because of the funds that, the timing of Measure H, not because we received the funds, but because the timing of it. However, when the Department of Treasury took into considerations all the comments from the different cities and counties, they came back and instead, or in addition to being able to do that calculation, they also allowed that you can do a ten million revenue loss standard allowance. So basically, we can do the calculation and get the money that way, or we can take the option for the ten million revenue loss standard allowance. So this is very important to us. We are only receiving nine-point-eight million, but this means any money that we haven't allocated, we can now put into that category and have a lot more flexibility when it comes to using the funding. Some of the other changes that they made were to the Public Health and Economic Response. They just broadened the eligible uses, and they clarified what allowable capital expenditures were. They changed, in the category of premium pay, they broadened essential workers. They did change some of who were considered essential workers. And then also, there was a component that says, by receiving this premium pay, your pay is not to exceed a certain percentage of the median income. And they increased that number just to make it more viable. This doesn't affect the city. And then finally, in the water sewer and broadband infrastructure category, they expanded eligible projects, which we haven't determined any projects at this time. And with that new qualification, we actually don't need to. So just to give you, that's just a brief overview of the changes they made. What we're looking at tonight is the category of assistance to small businesses, as council asked me to bring back. And so touching on that, some changes have also happened in this category. So I'd just like to explain to you what it is that we need to do if we would like, if council would like to start this program. So there are actually two categories. The first category is impacted small businesses. In that category, if you are an impacted small business and you want to apply for this grant, then you would have to qualify by basically showing the city, myself, that there was a decrease in revenue or gross receipts to your business, that you suffered increased costs due to COVID, or that there's financial insecurity. There's other qualifying factors as well, which will be included in the application if council chooses to do this program. Some of those are, the business can show that there are challenges covering payroll, rent, mortgage, or other operating costs, and also that they don't have the capacity to weather financial hardship. If a small business applies for the funding under this category, they would have to prove that they had basically a financial hardship due to COVID. If they qualify, they prove that financial hardship, then they can use the funding only for specific categories. And those categories include payroll and benefits, mortgage, rent, and utilities, and any operating costs. The second category, it is disproportionately impacted small businesses. They have a completely different set of qualifying factors, and they have a completely different set of funding uses. So there are three qualifying factors in this category. The only one that applies to the City of Los Banas is that they are operating in a qualified census tract. And just to go to the next slide for a minute, to refresh your memory, the qualified census tract is this area that we see in red. So that would include most of our small businesses in the downtown area. If you are in that operating, or if you are operating in that qualified census tract and you do fill out the application to get this grant, then your funding can only be used for the specific categories that I'm about to list. So you could use the funding to rehabilitate the commercial property, the storefront, or facade improvements. You can use it for technical assistance, grants for startup, or expansion costs for new businesses. We could also, it can also be used to support micro businesses, including financial childcare and transportation costs. Either category, whether it's impacted small business or disproportionately impacted business, will have to show proof of spending the funds. So we don't just give them the money and say, oh, here you go, have a nice day. They actually have to provide proof of how the funding was spent in order to comply with the grant. That being said, in tonight's staff presentation, the recommendation was a hundred thousand dollars be put toward this program. That means that a hundred thousand dollars is available to different small businesses. The max that any small business would get is ten thousand dollars unless the council determines that they would like to see another amount allocated to this project. There's our map again. So in addition to the small business, the proposed small business program, we are also asking the city to use the rest of the funding to be allocated towards the, what we do call it, is the revenue reimbursement. As I stated, we weren't eligible for this before. However, the new rule does allow for a standard allowance of up to ten million dollars. It is more flexible, and the reason for that is that this, the allowable spending is on government services. Government services are anything that the city traditionally provides. So things like building infrastructure, whether it's parks, or roads, or maintenance, provision of police and fire, and other public safety, including vehicles, and just the general things that we do every day. We can't go and create something new, but just the general services that are provided by the city on a regular basis. And all future projects and purchases will be brought back to council for approval. Just to refresh your memory, we have not received all the funding, so that is one of the reasons I'm not asking to allocate it all out to specific projects tonight. We've only received half, about four-point-nine million. We are expected to receive the other four-point-nine million in July of this year. If you allocate a hundred thousand dollars to the small business program this evening, that would leave six-point-three million that could be allocated to this category. And during budget time and other times, we would come back to council with specific projects or equipment purchases that would qualify under this government service category. Some of the things that we talked about in the past, as far as improvements to parks, sewer-water infrastructure, that all still falls into this category of government services. So we don't have to worry about if we're meeting that census tract. We don't have to worry about if it is specific to COVID here, it just is a government service. So it makes the most sense to put it here, and this is what we were looking for all along. So what I'm asking for tonight is two options, for the council to adopt a resolution, funding the small business grant program, and then allocate all remaining funding to the revenue reimbursement. Or if you're not interested in funding that small business program, you simply direct staff to allocate all remaining funding to revenue and reimbursement, and at which time, as projects and equipment are allotted, we will bring those back to council. So that's all I have for you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We'll go through council for question, comment, or recommendation. Mr. Jones?
Well, thank you, Mayor. So we already have a million dollars out there in the Rad Card program that kind of covers us, actually, it does cover us citywide instead of just a small census tract. I'm afraid the small business grant program is just not fair to all businesses. It's just which ones are in that census tract and which ones pretty much apply and qualify first. And I can see this being a little bit of a hassle for staff, and it just seems like it's tilted unfairly. A small four option B, which is put it all towards revenue reimbursements.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
I'm going to agree with Councilmember Jones also, but I was wondering if Ms. Williams would be able to, is there any update on the Rad program for the, that's coming up?
So unfortunately, the person who was in charge of the program was sick for a while, which kind of pushed it back. We did receive the contract, we are reviewing it now. They do have a list of all of the businesses that are qualified for the program. So they, their business department has now been put in touch with Stacy, and they will go back and forth to make sure that all the businesses are being properly notified and set up with the Rad Card, if that's what they'd like to do. And then once we get that contract up and signed, then we will fund the first part of it, and we'll be ready to go. And then we'll be making announcements, obviously, at that time. We should have it up and running by the beginning of March. That's our expected timeline.
Okay, sweet. Thank you, Ms. Williams. It's going to be the part B there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sonya, I have some questions. So we have the Rad Card that we're doing, and then we have money that will be allocated to, you know, a special district, you know, downtown that you showed on the presentation. What can this council do to equalize out other businesses that are outside of that area? Because we have a lot of businesses on the Chaco Avenue that are individually owned but don't fall in that targeted area. So how do we help those businesses?
Okay, I don't think I did a good job of explaining it. So let me, let me explain. There are two categories. The category of impacted small business is anybody who wants to, who can prove, that can show that they had a financial loss due to COVID. So if you allot to do this, then anybody in the city that is considered a small business would be eligible for the funding, not just the people in the Census Bureau. They would have to prove, however, that they had a decrease in revenue, financial insecurity, loss due to COVID. And then the funding uses that you see here, the money can be spent on these items, which payroll and benefit, mortgage, rent, and utilities are pretty general. Operating costs gives them a little bit more leniency what they should do. In addition to that, then it breaks it down further and just allows people on the qualifying census tract to not have to prove that they had a loss to COVID. But they could still, funding is still available to them, but they could only use the funding for the items listed here, which again are rehabilitation of commercial properties and storefronts and facade improvements, technical assistance and grants for startup or expansion costs. So if somebody new to the area wants to come in, if we lost businesses downtown because of COVID, then new businesses can come in and they can use this money to start up their business. And then, of course, support for micro businesses, including financial childcare and transportation. So this does both. This allows any business that is considered a small business within the city limits of Los Banas to apply and to, but they'd have to prove hardship due to COVID. And then it breaks it down smaller. In addition to that, people could apply that are in that qualified census tract without having to prove that they had a loss during, due to COVID. And it's just the funding uses are different. That's all.
Okay, so what you just described, that all falls under impact, small, impact small businesses? Or does that also fall into the other category? The people who don't have to qualify fall into the second category, which is disproportionately impacted?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Okay. And there's no income qualification for either one of these areas, right?
So it's not income qualification, but for impacted small businesses, they would have to show financial loss due to COVID.
Right, right, that I understand.
Other than that, it's not, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Just to clarify, Ms. Williams, there, this assistance to small business on this slide, is the Rad program already included in this? Is that part of this idea, or is this a separate new recommendation or potential recommendation?
This is.
A new recommendation?
Yes, this is a separate and new recommendation that council asked me to look into and bring back.
Okay, very good. So this is completely separate from the Rad program?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I wanted to make sure that was clear.
And Mr. Mayor, before you move forward, it appears that each council member is giving their indication, and my indication would be for impacted small businesses.
Okay, all impacted, impacted and disproportionately impacted?
Well, just impacted small businesses, that category.
Okay, not to include the disproportionate?
No.
Okay, very good. Take that note here. I'll go to Ms. Yamas, and I'll come back around, and Mr. Lambert has a question there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Williams, what I understand is that these, both these categories have their own restrictions, correct? Which kind of equals things out, if you will. One can use it for X amount, the other one has to show cause as to why they would need it, loss of revenue, for example.
Exactly. But the actual impacted is a lot harder to prove, and it's kind of what the approach that we took with the CARES funding, and people didn't want to do it, and so it wasn't successful. The disproportionately impacted is obviously easier, and if, like, for instance, you're trying to back the lost businesses down in the downtown area, it would make it easier for them to receive funding and be able to start up new businesses than the, simply just the impacted. I brought both of them because I thought it might benefit the city to do both.
Roger, I think that it would, once the city as a whole revitalized, the city as a whole has suffered, and I'd like to see the city as a whole be able to qualify, potentially qualify for these funds. Now, I ask you, Mrs. Williams, since you'd be the one principally tasked with implementing this program, do you see this as a viable thing for you? Do you see it as being overburdenous? Do you see it as something that your staff and yourself can manage, or is it something that's just going to be too much of a workload? Because that's important.
So honestly, the reason why we presented the Rad Card in the first place in lieu to this is because it is quite difficult. It does take some time, but the hard part is not my side. The hard part is actually getting the businesses to fill out the application, provide the correct information, and submit what they need, and they just don't want to go through the steps of it. I was a little excited to see the other side, the disproportionately impacted, because as I stated, there's not really work on either side besides any business that might come into that red area that I showed, would have to just show proof of receipts that they spent the money on those items, which might allow you to get new businesses in that quality census tract without a lot of effort for them having to prove a hardship. So it's both. I kind of blabbered instead of answering that question. I was not successful with the CARES program, and I think it was more on the business owner's side than it was on the city. It does take us some time to review the paperwork and make sure that they have everything. And I think I only did two.
So with that paperwork, there's a lot of errors, omissions, and there's a lot of back and forth between you and the applicant, back and forth, that's a lot of time, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so what are the two categories again here?
Impacted small businesses and disproportionately impacted small businesses.
And the ones that, the one that primarily affects the downtown area, which category is that?
That would be the disproportionately impacted small businesses. So I'll put this slide up again. The impacted is the city as a whole, anybody who would qualify to be a small business. The disproportionately impacted would be anybody who fell in that census tract would qualify differently.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much. I think I'd go with the, I believe the impacted. Thank you. Oh, one last question, I'm sorry. Now, with these funds, as far as parks, they can use for parks for, say, building signs or improving the landscaping? Are there any restrictions on that?
No, we could, if we put it into that general category, we can do anything with the money.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yamas. And let's go here, we have Mr. Okay, thank you, Mr. Yamas. And, let's go here. We have, Mr. Lambert has his hand up, and it looks like we're gonna go back around. So, Mr. Lambert?
Can, can we stop for one moment? I am having, my computer just shut down.
Oh, is that where we got the beautiful flower?
See you guys, and I need to kind of run out into the other room and fix it. So, if you don't mind pausing, so I could take care of that, I'm sorry.
Alright.
It's colorful.
And then, looking at the, at the packet here, outlining the set pages, 79, 80, 81, and 82, if anyone's following the packet there. Yeah. Essentially, staff's recommendation was either adopt the business grant program, allocate, either adopt resolution funding a small business grant program, or do not fund a small business program at all. Those are the two recommendations from staff, in the staff report. So, I just wanna point that out. If we, if we modify that, we can do that as well. But, just noticing that these are the staff recommendations. So, wait for Ms. Williams to return.
We are looking, ready to go. I apologize for the disruption.
You took away our beautiful flowers, but that's okay.
It was my screensaver in my office, and it shouldn't show that. It should show my presentation.
That's alright. Our staff is just as beautiful as our, as our, as our flowers. So, Mr. Lambert, we'll go back to Mr. Lambert there.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Williams, now, the impacted, is there a certain year that they're gonna be guidelines for that certain year? 2021, 2020?
Yes. So, we would go back to when COVID first happened. So, they would have to tell me two years prior.
Took 2020, 19.
So, they have to do 18 and 19, and then 20, 21, so I can see the difference. I have to-
Gotcha.
-be able to view the loss.
Alright. Thank you so much. That was my only question.
There we go. My cough button. I'm going down. Ms. Lewis, I see you're next in the hand raising list there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question that I've been going to answer. Whichever fund we choose, if this funding is allocated but it's not used by the business community, can the council reallocate the money, or does it just go away?
No, they can reallocate the money as with anything else that we have done.
Okay. But it has to be one of these two categories?
No. It could be one of the four categories. I would recommend that it goes back into the revenue and reimbursement. Anything that we do from now on, I would recommend goes into revenue reimbursement, just because we have the most flexibility. So, if you do choose to add the small business program tonight, at whatever cost, then we would put that in there and all remaining funds into revenue reimbursement. If you choose not to do the small business program, then we wouldn't allocate any funding to that tonight, and they would all go into revenue reimbursement, and we would bring projects and programs back to you at a later date.
Okay, and this is 10 million that is being recommended by staff?
It's actually, we're allowed to do up to 10 million. We've only received 9.8. I think the remaining, what we haven't allocated yet, is 6.6 mil, 6,441,684 dollars. So, that would be put into revenue reimbursement. And as the funding became available, we would allocate it to different projects or purchases.
Okay, and I think the only other thing that council needs to determine at this point is how long will we let this go before we reallocate? Because I wouldn't want to sit on this two, three years and nothing's happening, and that money could be reallocated to benefit the community as a whole with some of these other projects that are in here.
So, I do have a clarifying question, because in proposing the small business, it wasn't intended for you to pick one or the other. It was kind of a inclusive situation, and it sounds like you guys are trying to exclude one. I'm not 100% sure that that's appropriate for the guidelines. I felt, Bill, do you mind helping me out, if you remember? Because I, I feel like it's, if you're gonna do the small business program, that both categories are qualifying, and it can't be an either/or type of thing. It's either we do it, or we don't do it.
As I read the, as I read the guidelines, if you're gonna do it, both those categories are gonna be included in the eligibility. You don't have to do it at all, but you can't pick and choose those eligibility. So, as I understand it, if you have that program, then both those categories can apply, and through your criteria and your grading scales, you figure out which of those grants that you're going to allow. You notice that for very different purposes. The, the COVID-related grants are for payroll, bills, things like that, whereas the non-COVID-related, if it's just that census tract, it's for street facades and capital improvements and things like that. But I didn't get the impression from reading those guidelines. I think Sonya and I read them multiple times, because they're not easy to understand. My impression was that if you adopt the small business program, both those categories are included.
Okay, thank you. That's-
So, is there any unassurance on staff's part in the interpretation of this? Because if there is, then I certainly would like to recommend it, you know, to be brought back to council, because as it stands right now, based on what you're sharing, this could change my mind on how I vote on this project altogether versus what I understood in the beginning, that we have two categories to choose from to fund, whether it's impacted small businesses or disproportionately impacted small businesses.
I think the presentation was you had two categories, either small business program or to the revenue and reimbursement, and that the qualifications in the small business program are two-pronged. And I, as I recall those regulations, I don't have them in front of me, my, I have a high degree of confidence that both, someone can apply and qualify under either of those scenarios.
Okay. And one of the areas that I, I struggle and have difficulty with is in the business category for startups. I would, I would have no issue in helping somebody restart up a business that they have, that they may have lost during the COVID, but I struggle with using this money to start up new businesses for people who weren't even in existence during the COVID time. So, I, I need some clarification on that part as well.
So, the, okay. So, I also agree with Bill that, one, you, it's either you do the small business program with both qualifying categories, or you don't do the small business program at all. And I do have the rules in front of me, and I'm rereading them. I just wanted a little bit reinforcement there. Two, in that area, the startup program, so if a, if a business has completely went out of business and wants to come back, yes, they qualify for it. But if a new business wants to come in, they also qualify for it. And the reason for that is because you've lost a lot of businesses. You've had people that have moved out of cities, and this is trying to help you reestablish your economy. So, whether it's with somebody who was impacted by COVID here or not, it's just to help the community as a whole rebuild their economic foundation.
So, there's no provision within this that gives the council any leeway as to say, any startup business can apply, and if they meet the qualifications under the guidelines, then the money has to be allocated out? Am I hearing that, or is, does council have any say on what kind of businesses we'd like to see coming in our community?
No, it doesn't allow for that.
Okay.
Very general.
Okay. So, then with that, this 10 million dollars, if council decides not to go with either of these programs tonight, that 10 million dollars could be reallocated somewhere else.
Okay. So, there's 6.4 left, and I'm, I was asking for $100,000 for small businesses or more, if that's what council's outfit. If you don't put anything, and if you choose not to do the small business program tonight, I'm asking you to take the remaining ARPA funding, which has not been allocated. So, some of the other allocations were the Rad Card. We allocated money to police equipment, HVAC, homeless assistance and park improvements, and then also premium pay. I'm asking for the difference in those already established allocations to be allocated to general services or revenue reimbursement, which would be 6.4 million if you choose not to do anything with the small businesses. The 10 million is just the cap of what we're allowed-
Right.
-to put there. We didn't actually receive 10 million. We only received 9.8.
Yes. Okay. Alright, well, I, I see there's one other hand up, so I'll, I'll just hold on my thoughts for right now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.-
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Sonya, on that $100,000 that you guys proposed for small business grant program, how would you guys divide that up one more time?
Up to $10,000, up to $10,000 per applicant. So, if an applicant comes in and they, they only need $5,000, they could, they could apply for $5,000, or they could ask for the whole $10,000. But it's up to $10,000 limit, which again, is at the council's discretion. If you wanna put $500,000 towards the program and make it $100,000, or you wanna put $50,000 and make it $5,000, it, the increments are up to the council's discretion.
Okay. You know, during this whole COVID period, we've had at least three, at a minimum, of either federal or state grant programs or loan programs that were forgiven for this, small businesses. So, these businesses have had some assistance that have reached out for it. I don't, I don't know how long we can keep going on this, you know? I just feel like the way that we're gonna do it is just that we're gonna leave out so many businesses. We're not gonna be able to save them all. We're not gonna bring back a bunch off this. It's kind of a small amount. So, I'm still pretty stuck on option B there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Are we, okay. Did we get a, did we get a freeze up? We lose Mr., oh, there he is. Okay. Mr. Jones froze up there for a minute. Okay. Very good. So, we have two choices. The law gives us two choices. We can either include a small business grant program or not. And item, the options, option A is to include the funding for a small business grant program as the, as the federal government has laid out the rules for us. It's our discretion, essentially, how much we wanna put in that, if we don't that staff has recommended $100,000, if we go with that. But not, but, once again, it's at council's discretion if we choose to do that. The other option is don't fund the small business grant program at all, and go ahead and direct staff to allocate the remaining funding. To me, like, you know, I'm, I do see a lot of, there's been a lot of assistance. There's been a lot of help. I'm thinking, Mr. Pignaro, we've discussed a great deal about the potential for infrastructure development. We've annexed land for commercial industrial, and if we can start getting some infrastructure in place to, to make this place more inviting for commercial industrial development, jobs, I think that's a great way to spend our ARPA money. I do have a concern with $100,000, if you have, I mean, you would have 20 people with $5,000 each, or if you had 100 people, $10,000, $10,000 each. It's not a lot, and I don't think it would have, I don't think it would be that big a benefit, from my own perspective. So, I would recommend just not adopting the small business program. But that's my, that's what I see from this point, for getting the best bang for the buck, especially since we've had other programs in place, and we do have the Rad Program in place. And the Rad Program, how much, once again, Ms. Williams, is the, the Rad Program?
$1 million. We're gonna do it in $500,000 increments. So, as Mrs. Lewis stated, if it's not working, and we need to reallocate that funding someplace else, we can.
Okay. So, that's, that's a good chunk of change to help our businesses. And I think that's, we've shown our dedication and our good faith, and we also have to have dedication, good faith to the, to the development, proper development of the state. So, that's, that's my opinion. I'll go through. So, my recommendation is council, is I, is B, but I'll go back around through. Mr. Jones, I think, already expressed that he's in the same mind, not to fund the, not to fund the small business grant program. So, that would be B. Mr. Lambert?
I'm gonna stick with B also, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Now that my understanding of this has been clarified, I will go with option B as well.
Okay, very good. Ms. Yamas?
I'm gonna go with option A.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Very good. There seems to be council consensus for, for option B. So, Chair, entertain a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6461 with, going with option B.
Can I stop for a second? I think that resolution actually authorizes the small business program, Sonya? Can you double check?
It does.
So, no, no resolution would, would do what you're trying to do, I think.
That's correct. I just need direction that council would like that money to be allocated to revenue reimbursement.
So, no action on the resolution, but direction to allocate the funds to the revenue reimbursement portion.
Okay. So, when the motion gets made, read the resolution with, with the council direction to take option B? Would that be appropriate? Or does it matter?
I can-
Bill, you're muted, Bill.
The way the resolution is written, it's to approve the small business program. So, by adopting the resolution, you would be, the only question was the amount of funding. So, if, if the consensus is not to do the small business program, you would not want to adopt the resolution, but instead, direct staff to allocate the funds to the revenue reimbursement portion of the ARPA funding.
So, the motion, the, so the motion would be to direct staff to direct funding to the, to not include the, the small business?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's pretty clear?
Mr. Mayor-
So, motion is still in order? A notion, a motion is still in order, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Now, let Chair entertain that motion.
Councilmember Lewis, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to redirect the requested funds from ARPA to the revenue reimbursement program on item number 10, Resolution 6461.
Thank you. Bill, I have a second.
Mayor, I'll Tim Lambert a second.
Thank you. I have a motion by councilmember Lewis, and a second by Mayor Portem Lambert, to direct the ARPA funding to revenue reimbursement program. Ms. Melanie Roca?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Hey.
Aria?
Yes. So, we have, motion passes, four to one. Mr. Yamas dissenting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for the excellent presentation. When the federal government gives you guidelines, you know you're gonna have to have, gonna have to have, schedule a good deal of staff time just, just to go through them, and then even more time to explain them. And we appreciate it very much. Okay, now we can go to item 11, advisement of public notices, and we have no report. Item 12, city manager's report. Mr. Pignaro has told me that he has no report this evening. He is, and he is at a conference. Is that correct, Mr. Pignaro?
Yes, that is correct. No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, we'll go to 13, update on city, county association energy governments, Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure B Committee. MCAG has going through their regional housing needs assessment process, and also- and also going through their regional transportation plan process. And these are both very community-active, community-involved. Just to give you an idea, the regional transportation program, the RTPSCS, staff has proposed and approved the formation of advisory committee, and includes the regular citizens advisory committee, the technical review board, which is all the CEOs, governing board, all transportation modes, ADA, seniors, agriculture, goods movement, emergency services, public safety, broad-based business, Caltrans, environment, natural resources, economic development, housing, social equity, environmental justice, education, public health. And so all these various sectors have to have input into this process. And so the regional transportation plan is the RTP, the RHNA, the regional housing needs assessment, is the RENA. There are some opportunities to get involved with that, and you can go to the MCAG webpage. You can call the office there, email, direct contact to the staff, and get some more information. There's so much, I wouldn't be able to give it all to you tonight. I would recommend that you do go to the MCAG, Merced County Association of Governments page. There's an agenda center there, and you can open up the agenda from our last meeting, and you can read all that very detailed information. So we'll bring that to our people here in Los Angeles. PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy, continues, we had a meeting last week, continues to pursue acquiring more power, supply, generation, and storage, going through the various changes at the state level with PG&E in the state. They're going to have their workshops, March 15th, in Spanish at 6:00 PM at the Community Center, and March 31st in English at 6:00 PM at the Community Center. We're going on, we go online with them in April. And with that, we'll move on to item 14, council member reports. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have no report tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to congratulate the young children, kids, for their achievement in the speech contest. It shows a lot. It shows a lot of promise, and like you said, Mr. Mayor, it's our future leaders. So very, very happy with that. I just want to talk about the homeless problem over here behind home people. As the weather warms up, I'm concerned that we're going to have more folks infiltrating the neighborhoods, more theft, more vandalism, more assaults, thefts, et cetera. So I'm very concerned with that, and I'd like to be more engaged with the decision-making process as that, as we address that problem. Secondly, as we've seen, I think the good doctor talked about that, that we're working more towards endemic. And with that in mind, I'd like to know if the city manager or in combination with staff could let us know or start working on a solution, or maybe report back to us on in-person meeting? Because I think it is important, it is important that we start leaning into that, because it's part of our open democratic process. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Mr. Jones?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
I just want to say thank you to all the presenters. All the presentations were presented very well. And also, I'd like to say I do see the groundbreaking of the new IHOP down there in Councilmember Lewis's area. So hope to see that, see the structure start coming up. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can't wait to see the structures of pancakes stacked up with the various syrups available, which is what I love. I happen to love pancakes, which is, I guess it's obvious, looking at me. Anyway, I was once told that the middle age is when you're broad-minded and you're going to waste trade places. I don't know. All right, now we are going to, Ms. Melanie, would you like me to adjourn now before going into closed session?
Yes, please.
Okay, very good. We will be going into closed session. And I will read the closed session item before we motion to adjourn. This is conference with real property negotiations pursuant to government code section 549, 56.8, property located at 610 Pacheco Boulevard, Los Angeles, California, approximately 0.296 acres, accessories parcel number 026121006. In the meeting will be the city negotiators, city manager Pignaro, city attorney Vaughn, community and economic development director Elms. And negotiating parties will include civil A Baladi trustee, and under negotiation is the purchase price and terms of sale. With that, Cheryl, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert here. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Lewis seconded motion.
Thank you. A motion by Mayor Portman Lambert, seconded by Councilmember Lewis to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Melanie Roque, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Meeting adjourned at 8:09 PM. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone. We'll report out after the closed session. Hello, everyone. We've come out of closed session, and we have no reportable action this evening. Thank you for joining. Bye-bye.